All right, so let's call it a order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, October 26th. If everybody could please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Badsen.
Here.
Alex Kelly-Palley.
Here.
Zach Marty.
Here.
Scott Moose.
Here.
Karen Lundberg.
Here.
Owen Mauer.
Here.
Okay, so tonight's agenda, we have a little update on our student assessment data, which I understand is very good news. Nothing specific from the president's report. We'll have all of our school board reps give us an update, superintendent's report, we'll open it up for public comment. The consent vote agenda is listed. It was reviewed earlier in the month in committee. And then we have brief updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Nothing from property, Stephen, that I'm aware of. Karen, anything from CDO?
Just...
Okay, small update there. IASB?
Yeah.
No, not down there. And we will have an executive session. There's no action pending after the executive session tonight. Okay, all right, student assessment data.
Well, as Rita makes her way to the front, as you know, one of the things that we've all worked very hard together on over the past 10 years or so is taking what has historically been a really great district and making it even better. And in our business, the way we do that is we continually work at our students being more successful than they were the year before. So one of the ways we track our data is longitudinally, and we do 10-year rolling windows where we can do some comparison. And tonight, on two key data points that are important to us and our communities, I think you're going to see the fabulous work that the teachers have done, the administrators, the support staff, and the board, with the support of our communities over the past 10 years. I think you're going to see some incredible growth in our ACT data and also our advanced placement work. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Rita Fisher, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Rita?
Thank you, Prentice. The picture, really, that our assessment data paints tonight is that picture that Prentice described of two really great high schools that continue to do everything necessary to become the elite institutions that they are today, that can be counted among the best high schools in the state and the nation. Without all the supports in place to ensure the continuous growth that we see in our ACT composite averages, as well as participation and success in our AP program, we would not be showing these kinds of numbers that you're going to see tonight. So it is a testament to the hard work done at each of the schools, to the excellent teachers that we hire, and to the dedication of our students to do what's necessary to earn these kinds of scores. The first data that we're going to look at is our average ACT composite scores. And as Prentice mentioned, we like to take a look at 10 years of kind of rolling data. This is a lot of numbers to look at on a big screen, but the best news comes when you see the continuous growth in the composite score over those 10 years. And then we'll quickly go to the 10-year comparison. From 2005, when ACT scores had been inclusive of all students in the state of Illinois for a couple of years, this was several years into when ACT became an instrument that every student in the state took. In 2005, these numbers included only those students who took the ACT on a regular time administration. It didn't include any of the extended time scores or scores with accommodations. And at that time, our composite scores in the district at Libertyville High School, at Vernon Hills High School, were very strong composite scores. And when you start with scores like that, it's difficult to move the needle forward, unless, as we said, you're doing everything right to ensure that every student learns and grows and achieves in ways that allow you, over time, to grow those composites. When the state went from an average of 20.3 to an average of 20.7, in District 128, we've grown from 24.3 to 25.4 average ACT composite. And again, starting at that 24.3 makes it more difficult to grow the full point over a point that we have. So these numbers speak to the success of our students in external measures that make sense to them moving into their post-secondary careers. So when we look at what are the data points that matter most to our students, it certainly is how do they perform on college entrance exams? And how do they do in the rigorous AP courses that earn them credit and/or placement at universities? And in these two measures, there is nothing but positive news in this data. So we're going to move from the ACT composite, the graduating class of 2015. This is their most recent score that's included in this average, sometimes called the best score data, but really, the way ACT compiles this is just what's the most recent ACT test that is on record for the class of 2015 in both of the high schools. So we move from that to our Advanced Placement Program. And again, these are a lot of numbers on the screen that we'll move to a more narrow look at the comparisons, but there are a couple of things I want to point out. That when we talk about AP students, we're talking about students who are enrolled in AP classes, took at least one AP exam. So how many students do we have who took at least one AP exam during that particular year? And in 2005, that number was 537 students, District Y. By 2015, we have over 1,000 students participating in AP classes, taking AP exams. The number of exams has increased dramatically, as well as those exams that are earning scores that are considered to be passing scores, three or above is considered passing. We also know that as time has gone by, many universities are looking only at fours and fives, sometimes only at fives. And so we've begun to track data of what percentage of our students are earning four or higher on their exams as well. Those numbers are increasing dramatically over time as well. While the percentages of students taking exams remain healthy or even grow. So, you know, the kind of myth out there is if you begin to increase your numbers by including more students in AP exams, the scores are going to decline, or you're going to see some reduction in the average scores. And that's not been the experience in District 128. We've continued to build the program, and we continue to ensure that our students are successful in their AP exams. So when you look at this 10-year comparison, I took a look at our student population increase over the same 10-year period, and that was a little over 3%. And so while the number of students in the district has grown by about 3%, we've had a 94% increase in the number of AP students in the district, and that is students who are taking at least one AP exam. We've had a 109% increase in the number of exams that we've administered, 122% increase in students who have taken exams that will earn them college credit or placement, and 132% increase in those numbers of exams that are scored four or five. So by all measure, we are graduating students from District 128 who are attending colleges and universities, better prepared, with more college credit, and more likely to succeed in those institutions as compared to their peers who have not had the advantages of these rigorous courses. The next chart takes a look at state and global comparisons. And this percent is a little bit different than the percent of exams earning three, four, or five, or percent of exams earning four or five. This is of all of the students who took AP exams, what percent of them earned at least a three on one of their exams. And in that measure, when you look at state and global comparisons, you know, they have remained much lower than D-128, and globally, the scores have declined a little bit, while we have remained steady. And even, you know, when you look at 2011 to 2015, there's been a slight increase in that percent as well. So again, by all measures, we are preparing students who are very likely, most likely, to succeed and to do well, and who can also eloquently describe how well they do in their classes when you ask them, as we know. So happy to answer any questions that anyone has, but there's our assessment data for tonight.
Rita, I want a couple of comments, and then we'll see if the board or the students have any questions. As the board has often heard me say, administrators have heard me say many times, and that we believe the only way to continue to increase student achievement in a very high-performing district like ours is to ensure that more kids are more successful every year. Our top, our students that are at the top academically are still, you know, knocking the lights out. Three of them are sitting here tonight with us. But it's all about moving students up that learning spectrum wherever they come to us. And everyone collectively has done a phenomenal job with that. In our world, this is just incredible data, and it's incredible news over a period of time. So it's really exciting for us to share that, and we kind of get all geeked up about that because it's what we do and it's what we're about. And at the end of the day, all of the things that we do in this district contribute to those numbers. But back when Dave Clough was still here, and really working on AP became an initiative, and we've really taken that and run with it over the last few years, it's really amazing to see those results. And much credit, of course, to the students who have worked very hard, but the teachers who have done a phenomenal job, the building leadership, instructional leadership teams at the buildings, and the principals, and the district office staff, and the board for our collective work together. And when we do work together, and we leverage what we have here in the district, these are the results that we can get. But those jumps are significant because, as you pointed out, we were at a very high level when we started, and to keep moving that needle up is very difficult. And we moved that needle up on both those measures substantially. So just want to express our appreciation to everyone, and thank everyone, and tell everyone how excited we are about that, because that data means that more of our kids are more successful now than they were even 10 years ago. And that's a byline of our mission as a public school. So, well, any questions or comments from the board or the students?
What is included in "global"?
Well, AP exams are administered internationally as well, so it includes any student who took an AP exam anywhere in the nation, and the world. Hence "global," not just the nation, also the world.
Do we get data by subject matter? I mean, do you know what the math scores are versus the English scores?
Yeah.
And are there any that stand out as being especially high, and then some other ones where you say, you know what, this is the area we want to target to improve?
We do look at all of that data. You can't really get these kinds of numbers unless across the board, the numbers look very good. So we do, you know, we do, there are exams that students take earlier in their career, and there, you know, there's this myth that there are some exams that are a little more accessible than others. So are all of the percentages the same? No, but are they all very healthy in order to kind of get to this point? Teachers also get instructional planning reports that help them understand how their students did on specific parts of the exam. So when we target improvement, it allows us to target improvement on those kinds of questions that students did not do as well on as other kinds of questions. It's not a, you don't learn how every student did on every part of the exam, but you do learn in general, for example, questions that dealt with a certain historical period. How did my students do on these particular questions? And is that an area where I need to spend a little more time or get, you know, more in-depth on? How did students do on the various types of essays in comparison to the multiple choice performance? So that helps us to target improvement in that way.
That's good. All right, thank you.
Great stuff, thank you. A round of applause. I think that's, that's great.
All right, nothing specific, other than to highlight and say thanks to all of you who attended or were part of the District 128 Foundation event over the weekend. I apologize I was not there, but I heard it was a great event, and appreciate everybody's commitment to further the work of the foundation, which I think has been nothing short of phenomenal since I know I've been on board.
They've given out 200, over the past 10 years or so since we've had the foundation, they have given out over $215,000 to the buildings for innovation grants, specific targeted innovation grants that teachers apply for to enrich and enhance your learning experience, looking at the students when they say that, as well as block grant money that both John and Joe O'Brien and Andrew Young and Irina and her team can use locally with their teachers. And then last year, they actually started, you know, a fund for needy students to help support them as well. So when you think about 10 years ago, the Foundation had no endowment, and I think we're around $180,000 now, if I remember right, I think I'm in the ballpark there. And then the fact that they've given out over $215,000, any money they raise goes directly back to the students through some conduit, so it's pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, absolutely, well. I remember when the idea first came up, I don't think we ever envisioned it would be that successful.
They've done a phenomenal job.
Okay, student school board reps, the best part of the meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to start with talking about athletics at Libertyville. So I'm sure most of you guys know our football team is 9-0 right now, so they were undefeated in their regular season, which is really exciting. And the first playoff game is this Friday, so we're hoping for the best. LHS Boys Soccer ran regionals the past week, so that's also really exciting, they've been doing really well. And then besides that, many fall sports are kind of coming to an end now, and winter sports will be starting up soon. For academics, Luke, Nehar, and I, in October, in the beginning of October, we held like a conference with various students at the school. We kind of like asked them questions about like what they've been thinking about, like things that have been going on at school. And one thing that we heard back a lot was that students really like having Chromebooks in classes, because it makes online homework really accessible and easier, so people have been liking that a lot. So that was good to hear.
That's really good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, because I know last year, we had online homework too, and people were getting kind of stressed about it, because if you were like at a sport, you couldn't do it, like if they practiced or anything. But now with Chromebooks, everyone can do it like on their own time, which is really cool.
So they're all studying on the bus?
Yeah.
I'm sure they're...
Exactly. For extracurriculars, our musical, Starlet Express, is held on November 5th through 8th, and it's really interesting because it's all on rollerblades. Like I think the majority of the cast is on rollerblades, so they've been working really hard. They like built rollerblade ramps all in the auditorium, so I'm excited to see it. I think it's going to be really good. Student Council, yeah, it's really cool. Student Council is doing a canned food drive, and I think that's been pretty successful. We've been doing like various competitions between our third-period classes to see who can like get the most cans to donate to the food pantry, so I think that's been a really good thing. The senior class just finished up their annual coat drive for Lake County veterans. And then another service project we have is our Wish Project, which is Wildcat Initiative for Sharing at the Holidays. So right now, we're just kind of starting it up. We have our first meeting on Wednesday, and it's just raising money for families in need in Lake County and donating holiday presents to them. And then, oh yeah, Student Council, they've been doing videos called Wake Up Wildcats. I don't know if anyone's ever seen them, but they're just kind of like announcement videos that are held weekly, and this year, students have really been liking them because they're made by the students. So it's cool because it like incorporates like a bunch of like announcements about clubs, and like the canned food drive, stuff like that, and I think it really gets people involved, so that's been cool to see. That's all.
So as for VHHS, what's going on is that recently, we had the 2015 VHHS Career Expo, in which we had 88 community participants representing 44 different companies on over 56 different careers and over 900 student attendees. So I would say that it was really successful, and it was really cool getting to go around and like meet different people and talk to them a little bit more about their careers. Also, on October 14th, all VHHS freshmen participated in the Right Assembly Program, which focuses on respect, integrity, and trust, and also encourages students to walk a mile in someone else's shoes before judging that person. We also want to thank the 25 seniors who helped out with that time, and also additionally with Yasmin Abdullah, Kenny Dantez, and Riley Walrath with sharing their personal experience. Also, we had French exchange students join families in the area, and they got to come to our high school, and that was pretty cool, getting to meet them. And we also recently inducted 11 new students into our NHS, so we just want to extend congratulations to those students. And then also, Nick Dantez received the 2015 Jefferson, Joseph Jefferson Award for Principal Actor in the Musical for Jewry Lane Theatre's Regional Premiere of Billy Elliot the Musical, which is really amazing. And last time, we were saying that he was nominated, and now he actually won, which is really exciting.
He's competing against adults, too. This was him and then adult principal actors from other shows. It's outstanding.
Oh, and then also, for first class, we have, the next first-class lesson that's coming up is our hashtag #VHGiveThanks, and we are having students surprise someone that they're thankful for with a phone call and a lesson video. And this was something that was really successful last year, and a lot of students liked it. And it's really cool, just getting to thank the people in your life who are really important to you. Also, for Student Council updates, we have, that homecoming was a really big success this year, with the highest attendance ever of over 600 students. So that was pretty great. And then also, we may bring Turnabout back this year, but we'll see, it might be Winterfest again, so we'll keep you updated.
Before I start with sports, I just wanted to say, the Right Assembly, I volunteered as a senior for that, and that is a really powerful experience, and I'm glad that we do that every year. This speaker is fantastic, and just the experience for the freshmen, for the teachers and the seniors that are involved as well, is really awesome, and they really value that. So, am I loud? So, starting, or before, also before athletics, congratulations to Julie Bullis for receiving the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizens Award. Now, sports. Congratulations to our Varsity Boys Golf Team for their fourth-place finish at state, which is awesome. They, the fourth-place finish was actually a little bit bittersweet, as they were in second with only two holes remaining. However, we only had one senior competing with the varsity, whose score counted this year, so that's a good sign for next year and the following. We have a lot of really good underclassmen. Also, girls and boys cross-country, congratulations to them for Prairie Division wins. Boys won their regional and will play tomorrow night in sectionals, and girls, second-place finish at the North Suburban Conference, which is really awesome. And then after a win, a much-needed win over Round Lake last Friday, our boys' football team will be playing their first playoff match this week. And Dance III and other, and parts of the Orchestra Dance Company had the opportunity to perform in Chicago with some professional dancers, performing Bollywood with the Chit Rahar Cultural Dance Academy. And so they were invited to perform for ceremonies at the 2015 Bridal and Prom Expo at the Merchandise Mart in downtown Chicago. And so they got to travel there and perform those, a couple commissioned pieces, and some of the dancers included VHHS students Aubrey Black, Allison Truenka, Alyssa Pasternak, Veronica Urso, Lexi Flee, Rebecca Schneider, and Andrea Kokinis. And on to fine arts. Our musical, Little Shop of Horrors, opens this week on Friday at 7:30, and then Saturday, there's a matinee show at noon, that's on Halloween, very appropriate. And then the following weekend, November 6th and 7th, both at, both at 7:30. Come see it, super fun, cast of 26, that's Emily's notes. And other music news, fall choir and band concerts were very successful, and first orchestra concert of the year is coming up, November 17th. And the Chamber Choir's annual magical dessert will be on December 5th. This year, it was pushed forward a week. Those always sell out quick, so if you're interested, we're going to be awesome this year. Get a ticket, you can ask Mr. Little. And then November 6th, students who auditioned at the beginning of October for ILMEA, Illinois Music Education Association, the District 7 Band Orchestra and Choir, over 30 students from Vernon Hills, and I think around 30 from Libertyville as well, were qualified after auditions. That's the next area in a couple of weeks, November 6th, and that's an all-day thing. And then some of those students as well always qualify for the All-State Convention and performances in January, and that's a much bigger event, that's like three or four days, three or four days. And November 14th, this was meant for Emily to say, so it's kind of awkward, but Senior Zachary Karisenberger has been selected to sing the National Anthem at the IHSA Girls' Volleyball State Final Tournament. That's from, also through the ILMEA organization. 18 students from throughout the state are chosen to audition for this opportunity, and five or six are chosen every year, one per fall sport. So I get that. That would be fun, you could probably watch it online or something.
We will.
And, I believe that's it.
Maybe we'll play it at the board meeting.
Yeah?
Sing it at the board.
Thank you.
All right, great job.
Wonderful.
All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, hard to believe, but we have even more good news than the students reported. We'll start with the Foundation, since Dr. Gritty mentioned that earlier. At its fourth annual fundraiser, the big event, held Saturday at Viper Alley, the D-128 Foundation for Learning, presented its second annual Alumni Achievement Awards. This year's winners were Allison Bain, VHHS Class of 2008, and Gwen Rowley-Shotwell, LHS Class of 1992. Allison is currently a third-year law student at Northwestern University and is the co-author of Ally's Law, better known as the Restroom Access Act, that allows anyone with a medical emergency access to an employee-only restroom. Gwen is the president and COO of SpaceX, and is on Forbes' 2015 list of the world's 100 Most Powerful Women. You can read more about this year's honorees on the Foundation website, so congratulations to our two honorees. Let me go back to the first page. The following students have been named Libertyville High School October Students of the Month: Dante Parra, Taylor Knoll, Hadley Vanderbosh, Hannah Buford, Gary Bang, Brian Strample, Jacob Lex, Massimo Camella, Kenji Mulhall, and Jose Vargas. The following Vernon Hills High School seniors were selected for fall induction into the VHHS chapter of the National Honor Society: Stephanie Benito, Stephen Daniel, Leah Dosamagan, Hiba Hashim, Inas Lee, Kristen Lee, Diana Malas, Hannah McGreevy, Lilian Meyer, Ivana Mora, and Rachel Weinstein. Congratulations to them. The LHS debate team received several honors at the Schaumburg Invitational Tournament Season Opener on October 17th. Over 25 schools and 200 teams attended the tournament. Freshman Hannah Rubenstein was ninth speaker in the novice Lincoln Douglas Division. Freshman Lancy Marcos was a quarterfinalist in the novice Lincoln Douglas Division. And Senior Emily Reagan was seventh speaker and JV Lincoln Douglas champion. LHS wrestling coach Dale Egger was inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame Illinois chapter and awarded the 2015 NWHOF Lifetime Service Award. The honors banquet was held in Countryside, Illinois on October 18th, with over 200 guests and family members in attendance, including Dale's brother Dave and both his parents, Don and Mary Egger. Much deserving, by the way, that's quite an honor for Dale. VHHS robotics engineers, Anne Kett, Argawal, John Han, Michael Kokinis, took first place, and Jeff Sang, Matthew Weiss, and Alec Mullenhauer took third place in a robotic payload transfer contest held last week at Abbott Laboratories. The team is coached by science teacher Jay Walgren. Through Stanford University's Teacher Tribute Initiative, LHS College Counselor Amy Belstra has been recognized by Sam Gold, LHS 2015 graduate, as having a meaningful impact on his life. A proposal by VHHS Business Education Teacher Sean Krevier and Social Studies Teacher Amanda Carroll to present at the Illinois Computing Educators Conference on February 25th has been accepted by the group. The half-day workshop is titled Coaching Teachers: Leveraging Technology for Fostering Higher Order Thinking Skills. LHS Science Teacher Sherry Rooks was named a 2014 Science finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, which is better known as PAEMST. The PAEMST honor is the nation's highest honor for teachers of mathematics and science and awardees serve as models for their colleagues, inspiration to their communities, and leaders in the improvement of mathematics and science education. So congratulations to Sherry. VHS Physical Welfare Teacher Jerry Maselli received a $1,000 grant from Memec Foundation for the use in outdoor adventure education. The grant money will be used to renovate a trailer that students will use for the outdoor education camping trips and adventures. The Memec Foundation for the Future of Education is dedicated to advancing the future of education by offering financial assistance in the form of grants to educators. And finally tonight, we're gonna recognize one of your own. Board member Jim Batson was recently recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards for his master board member status. So Jim, we wanna congratulate you and thank you for the work you've done. Job well done. So next on the superintendent's report tonight, I just wanna do a quick update on the Bring Your Property Plan. So Mark's been sending me pictures, I've been forwarding them to you. If you've driven by there in the last, even today, there's a change. Things are going quickly, so Mark, if you wanna do just a real quick update, you can use Yasmin's microphone there.
Today, the project is progressing at a great pace. Sixty percent of the synthetic turf gravel base is down and weather permitting will be completed by the end of the week. Final curb work around the field is formed and ready for concrete. The sidewalk along Jackson is in place and it looks great. Except for the access area off of Douglas, the parking lot curbs are all installed and we're, it's ready for gravel base to be put in. Today, this steel was delivered and installed for the south side of the washroom storage building and it's all prepped and tomorrow, weather permitting, the trusses will be installed on the building. On the interior of the building, all the plumbing is roughed in and the bricklayer has started erecting the walls inside the building. If all goes well by the end of next week, we should be seeing some synthetic turf work.
Did you say weather permitting? Was it about hurricane or something?
Well, we have weather for tomorrow and the day after and rain.
Rain. Rain.
It looks awesome.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty sound.
Honestly, hoping the neighbors have a favorable review. I mean, I think it looks a lot better than I ever imagined.
Better than what was there before with everything falling down.
In the park area, the landscape.
Yeah, once the landscaping is put in in the springtime and then...
Positioning, the parking lot and the building being across from a parking lot.
Yeah, parking lot's better. There's still a fair amount of green space.
It was up in the end, so.
Looks great.
Yeah, it's really exciting. Kudos to everyone.
It doesn't look sad.
That's, worked on that. We did, we did have a conversation that when we get it finished, we'll do some kind of recognition for opening, you know, the facility or recognizing completion of the facility. And certainly, you know, we'll invite some of the village officials over, but we'll, but yeah, we will. And we'll invite Jess Porras over, since Jess worked so hard on that and give us a good reason to see Jess again in Hill, who'd be very excited. She did so much backwork on that over the years to, to get us to that point. The other thing I think that, that really looks great and is not overwhelming is the fence.
Yeah, I think the fence looks great.
Have you and I have talked about that?
Yeah.
The six...
I hope it's calm.
Yeah, well, that would be another problem, so we might have to have another conversation, but the decorative fence actually looks really good. And still when you're driving east on 176, even with the building starting to go up and Mark and I were talking earlier, I think even when they get the truss and the roof on the building, since the positioning of the church on the angle, you can still see, I think you'll still be able to see, get a clear shot of the steeple in the evening and lighted, and it's just, again, that New England town feel, I think none of us expected when we went into this project. And then the opposite end of the field where Karen, you were mentioning green space, kind of awkward triangle there, but a nice patch of space is where the memorial will, will go in someplace. And so we'll roll right into the memorial at this point. And we've talked to the board a couple of times and the board has initially authorized roughly $50,000 to work in the project. We're working with our architect right now to see what we could do in terms of incorporating some of the limestone that's left from the other building. We've got some columns, we've got an arch into a memorial on that end. And take up just a piece of that property and still allow open space on the end for people to, you know, come over and throw a frisbee or have a picnic or just enjoy a walk around the block. So I think ultimately it's, it's gonna look really great and it will be in a position that kids can get on it, you know, as soon as the weather breaks into spring, which will be, you know, really phenomenal. So it's all, it's all good. So keep sending the pictures, Mark and Karen. I like those and I know the board likes those too, so thanks for your work on that. Next on the superintendent's report, I just wanna do a little follow-up on diversity, really coming off of our last meeting and a couple of conversations with one of our parents. And to that end, I've had conversations with the administrative team, the district and building leadership teams, as well as the board on moving forward with a diversity initiative. And that initiative would include initially surveying our students and our parents and our staff members. And we're currently working with some of our colleague schools in the Chicago area who have worked with groups that specialize in schools on diversity surveying. And so we're collecting, gathering information right now. Rita's been good enough to do that for us. And once we get responses back and we'll start contacting some people, we'll do some, you know, interviews, so to speak, with those groups. And then we'll come back to the board with a recommendation and move forward on that surveying. Once we get that data back, we wanna work with a group that can compile that data and give us some themes coming from that data. And once we get that data back, then we'll use that data to determine any training needs with staff, any work with students that we wanna do moving forward in the future. So we just wanna keep that on a high plane of thought and let the board know that we're continuing to move forward with that. And we all agree, as we've said all along, if we can do better in that area, then, you know, we're gonna do better in terms of that. And we can never do enough in that area and we'll move on in that area. And as a result, we'll be, you know, the district will be a better place to support kids and families, you know, in the future. So we think that's important and that's a high priority for us and so we'll be moving along with that probably over the next, you know, month or so, couple of months. We'll update the board and then we'll make some decisions and then we'll, we'll start moving. We'll set a timeline and, and we'll move forward. So any questions on that right now? I know, John, Rita, Alec, if you wanna make any comments on that?
I'll just make one, I just wanna be clear, this is, this is something that I think we're pursuing because it's the right thing to do.
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, I've seen some things about pressure and we're not under any pressure, but it's the right thing to do. It's a good time to do it. I mean, I think we have learned some things, but, I mean, I think we're very self-motivated to do this because it's just, it is right. Okay, so.
And it's just, just one example, we, just a couple of weeks ago, went through some required training from the state with, working with transgender students, which you know has been in the newspaper over in District 211 as, as they're navigating some of that moving forward. And again, readily apparent to us that, you know, we're gonna need more information, we're gonna need, you know, to do some things within the district to, to support students. So it's just another example that, you know, we always wanna continue to move forward in this area and Pat's right, you know, our motivation is in the right place here and as a result, we'll do what we always do in District 128. We'll make it better as a result of, of what we do and we'll try and put some place some, you know, also some long-term strategies moving forward. So, you know, we're, we're coming out of this with both short and, and long-term goals in terms of, you know, surveying and training and, and so we're staying on top of things as our staff changes as well. So, thank you to them. Okay, great. And last on the superintendent's report tonight, the board will note you have one FOIA request this month and Pat, I have nothing under other and I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Can I, can I make just one comment going back to the foundation event?
Yes, absolutely.
Number one, terrific event, but it also had, it's a partnership for first. A key person on our, on our foundation board is Ani Mattson and her and her committee led up a great team. Two, it doesn't happen without the support of the administration, so those of you that supported and came out, thank you very much. And then last but not least, Mary and Carol Scholes were awesome as it related to helping us get that thing going and a lot of behind the scenes work as always, fabulous, thank you.
Yeah, round of applause.
Okay, that's it, right? Alright, anybody from the public would like to speak? Seeing none. The consent vote agenda is listed, we reviewed it earlier in the month, I don't believe there were any changes to this. So if I can ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please. So move, sir, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Pong.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lonstad.
Aye.
No work.
Alright, motion carries.
Wait, I have to abstain. I, there's a familial relationship with one of the coaching candidates, so I don't want to.
So we got six yea and one's against.
That's my question.
Okay. Scared me for a second.
Just didn't let me say my thing, okay.
Alright, program personnel, chairperson Mallor.
Oh.
Now you can go.
Now you can go. Okay, so first we have first readings for board policies. There are three of them. The first one's policy two colon one sixty, Board Attorney. And that policy is there just to update the, updates and clarifies the relationship between the board and the board attorney. Then we have policy two colon two sixty and that is under the Uniform Grievance Procedure. And that, there's language added that clarifies the rights of a complainant and accused in the district during investigations. This is in response to an uptick of investigations by the Office of Civil Rights involving Title Six and Title Nine. The complaint managers and the policy are also updated. Then we move on to policy seven colon one thirty, Restrictions on Publications. And they've added language about electronic devices to the publication definition, also added a section on bullying and cyberbullying that could occur off-campus. So then we have questions regarding those changes. We will revisit those in another month and adapt them. Then we have edu, so we need to, we don't need to vote on those, but we go to Educational Tour Requests, the next part of the agenda. And there are seven listed, so we're looking for motions to approve those seven trips as listed. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Pong.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luz.
Aye.
Lonstad.
Aye.
Mallor.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Right, motion carries.
There's no others, so that concludes the report.
Very much. Facilities and Finance Chairman Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Grudy. We have one item on the agenda and that's our ongoing conversation about the adoption of the aggregate tax levy for fiscal year 2016.
Over the past few weeks, the board has been reviewing the tax levy, the upcoming tax levy, and has looked at a number of options as to the direction that we should go with our future tax levies as well as the one for 2015, 16. And this would be for the tax year, property tax year 2015. As you recall, in the past few years, the board has abated a substantial amount of money. And to this point, for the past, past four years, we have abated close to $15 million. Over the discussions that we've had on the 15 levy, we also discussed it, either abating the entire bond and interest levy or portion of the bond and interest levy as well as any of the operating fund levy. As you will recall, last year we abated 2.8 million out of the operating funds and another five plus million out of bond and interest. This year, our bond and interest payment without any kind of abatement is close to 6.2 million dollars. Through our discussions and with the majority of you supporting it, it was decided that we would abate about $4 million out of bond and interest. And that would bring our bond and interest levy to 2.2 million dollars. This year, we have seen a 13, I'm sorry, $17 million new construction property coming on the tax roll. As you recall, we also have another subdivision in the district who's going to annex to us. And those are estimated numbers that you see on there, this is the year that we can claim them to on our tax levy. And with a low CPI of 0.8%, determined that the operating levy would be around 74 million dollars. We also levy for CEDOL, it is in dollars that come to us but then go back to CEDOL for them to pay their IMRF. And the amount that we levy is not within our controls but more decided by the trustees at CEDOL and that amount is 214,000. Including the bond and interest, the levy for 2015 that is in front of you this evening is 76.4 million dollars. We still have estimated numbers on an equalized assessment from the county. And at this point, we're estimating that with new construction, that growth is about 4.5% as, I'm sorry, that just increase in existing properties about 4.5% and other percent coming from new construction as well as the annexation. So we're anticipating about an increase of about 5.5% in a total equalized assessment. This comes after a number of years of losing part of the value in this district because of the recession. And if you recall, last year we had a pretty flat increase, the year before was a decrease and the year prior to that too was a decrease in our equalized assessment. So this is the first year in a long time that we've seen any kind of increase in our equalized assessment. What I have provided for you is a document that says estimation of the tax levy. This gives you the information as what our tax levy was in the prior year of 2014, what is recommended and recommended for 2015. The difference between the two is less than 5%, so truth and taxation hearing is not required. And part of the determination tonight is to see whether or not a truth and taxation hearing would be required. Based on the information provided and approved by you, one is not required this, for this year. And I believe the last time that we had a truth and taxation hearing, which means that we asked for more than 5% over the previous year was in 2008. And the reason behind the 2008 increase was that we had close to 70 million dollars in new construction at that time. So it wasn't an increase in current properties, it was more of the new construction coming on our tax roll. So if you approve what is in front of you tonight, then we can determine that a truth and taxation hearing is not required. If that is done, then at the November 16th meeting, we will formally approve the tax levy request submitted to the county clerk. And then in March or April of 2016, we will get our final numbers from them.
Yasmin, so just review one more time with the board, with the recommendation for the board to vote on with the younger man. So after all the conversation, again, kind of started there and now one more time really for the community.
Okay. So if you recall, last year we had the abatement through the operating fund, that not being the case this year, the abatement coming through bond and interest this year. Our increase in our operating levy goes from 71.3 million dollars to 74 million. We also have a $4 million abatement in a bond and interest, which leaves us with about 2.2 million dollars there for a total levy of 76.4 million dollars.
Just wanted to review of that, so. And just a couple of comments and then we'll open it up for questions. But I think again, it's, it's important for the community to know two things, that we've really been working on this since the middle of July. It's really when we start our levy discussions here and we probably have 12 to 16 hours in those discussions moving forward since July. Yasmin's referenced over the past few weeks, but it certainly goes back to July. And we've had one meeting where we've done nothing but really tax levy, so we can focus on that. So it's important for the community to know that the board and the administration take the tax levy process very seriously here. And, you know, we're aware that property taxes are, you know, an issue for everyone that lives in the school district. The second thing I think is important for the community to know, if we go back four or five years and if the board abates, which is not collects in, in, in other parlance, a tax that they could otherwise collect, we are probably in the area of about, about 16 to 19, 19 million that we've abated over the last four or five years. And... And that, you don't see public bodies that are dependent on property tax doing that. So the board has been sensitive to the tax burden that our communities have while trying to balance that, again, against having, having everything necessary to have a world-class school district, as we've discussed tonight, and with the results that we've shown. So the board continues to be, you know, very responsible in the time they take to reflect on this, but also the decisions they've made when they've had opportunities to abate. Because $19 million from a public entity that depends on property tax, as our attorney and others have pointed out, you'd probably be hard-pressed to find another institution in the state that has come anywhere close to that on abatement. So just, I think, a couple of points of the public, we need to keep in front of the public. So questions, comments?
Just in terms of procedure, are we voting on the levy tonight, or does that come in November?
It's coming, coming in November, but the reason, the actual vote on the levy would be in November. The reason for this discussion tonight is to determine that we don't need a truth in taxation hearing, and then to document what we will be asking for in November, so that it's kind of in writing. Now, I should point out to you that if you're uncomfortable with the numbers, that you see that you still have till November to change whatever is on here, as long as it doesn't go over the 5%. Because the minute it goes over the 5%, then it's a totally.
So just to be clear, we're not really voting on the levy tonight. And to that point, if anyone has any further beyond the discussion that'll go on tonight, anybody, especially in the viewing audience, there will be a Facilities and Finance Committee on the 9th of November, and we will actually be voting on the 16th of November. Those are both Monday evenings. The Facilities and Finance Committee meeting is at 6:00 PM at the district office. And the 16th, the board meeting is our normal 7:00 PM. It's moved up a week because of the Thanksgiving holiday, but we'll be here, so.
We're not doing it. L H N? We haven't met there for so long, are we not doing our committee meetings?
Yeah, I've decided.
Do we need, what do you mean? Do you need to be at district office for the committee?
Not if this is accepted as is, then that's.
That's, that was what was on the schedule, so.
Okay.
Look out for the website to see exactly where the committee meetings are.
Should be at L H N.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those two, the 9th and the 16th, if anyone has any further questions or concerns, you can feel free to join and observe our meetings and make your comments and whatnot. So I just wanted to make sure people order with it. So other comments, questions?
Yes, Jim, one, one other thing I was remiss on tonight that I've tried to update the board on, which is no surprise to anybody that's in the room or is watching in the audience, there is no progress to report at the state on the budget. And so we don't know what will be part of a grand bargain to get the budget done at some point. We've discussed at length what the components could be of that and the impact that they might have on our district. At this point, there's just not a lot of conversation going on, and no decisions have been made. We're beginning to hear more and more that any real discussion and decision on the budget will not happen until January, because they're back to a simple majority then. And it's post any, you know, November elections, so that's where we stand right now. So it's still very uncertain at the state level, just for context.
Anybody else?
I will say that there's been significant conversation on this topic, so if there's, if there's not a lot of conversation here tonight, that doesn't mean that there's not interest in this. It's, we've had quite substantial conversations. And to verify, yeah, it is Libertyville High School Library on the 9th of November. I will spoke.
And yes, just to refresh my memory, so the reduction in O and M in transportation, well, last year was flat, I guess, the O and M.
Yes.
Is that to cover the abatement?
Actually, it's moving some of the funds into the education fund, because we did end up with a surplus in O and M and with a deficit in education, so it's taking care of that.
Okay, all right.
And you will recall that we're also trying to use our fund balances in transportation. That's why the.
So that was my next question. So can you at the next meeting show us where that's at?
Yes, I am.
I read that article, I don't know if it was a Tribune or something.
I read that, too.
So I'm going to make sure we have a good plan there.
Yes.
Okay? So we don't get blocked out of something there, if you want to do that. Okay?
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Okay.
Did you say, did you want to add to the last discussion or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll have another opportunity.
All right.
Okay. So that's all for the Facilities and Finance Committee.
And I assume you have a consensus on the other issue then?
That's all you need, you don't need a vote, right?
But we can take a vote so that it is official. I do not know if you.
Well, it's not, it's not sort of the agenda, so we just need a head nod or.
If there's anyone concerned.
So.
We're not unanimous, but it sounds like we have a majority.
Well, let's just go around real quick, just so we, Karen, you would be supportive of that at this point, but Yasmin, Scott.
I would be supportive.
Steven.
Yes, sir.
Alex.
No.
Okay, Jim.
I would be supportive.
Pat and Ella.
I think I would.
Okay. All right. Yas, you have what you need?
Yes, I do, thank you.
All right, so that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, property nothing, CEDOL, Karen?
Just want to mention the, the Administrative Assistant Doris Markness, who does a ton of work with the governing board, so that's what I represent us as a governing board at CEDOL. We did get a notification that she had, her husband suddenly cast away, and I sent condolences on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
I mean, I know you don't know her, but she's, you know, she is involved with all of us, she does.
She is Denise at CEDOL.
Yeah.
You know, just wonderful, incredible, been there for a long time.
Yeah. I just wanted you, since I didn't have everybody's P C A, I wanted you to know it.
Okay. Last but not least, we're going to move into executive session, so I need a motion.
I do have an I A S B. Just as a reminder, and I will, I think the best way is to send this link to Prentice, and you can disseminate it amongst the board members. Each year during the I A S B conference, there's a Resolutions Committee that meets, and being your representative to the I A S B, I often attend those, and it's basically position statements that the I A S B adopts pertaining to legislation or our school code or something, those types of things. There's a whole list of these things that we basically vote on. So what I want to do is send you the link to the document of the proposed resolutions, and if you're, you know, having a case of insomnia or something, you want to have some late-night reading or something to put you to sleep, you can read through some of these. And if there's anything of concern or anything that you feel is, you know, we need to take a strong stand on, please just get back to me on those so that I know how to or not to vote on, on any of those, should I attend that meeting in, in November. We'll have another board meeting before then, I just didn't want to hit you with that one week out from the conference, so.
And as Jim has noted, that really frames the I A S B's legislative positions for the year in there. Of course, a great partner and supporter of public education when we're working on legis, legislation in Springfield, so.
All right, that it?
That's it, thank you.
All right, so we're going to convene an executive session for pending or imminent litigation, ILCS 120/2C11. So if I could ask for a motion to move into executive session. Yeah, there's no vote, we're coming out, so no further action tonight.
I can motion that we go into executive session to discuss, discuss pending and/or imminent litigation.
Second. Vote call, please.
Delly Powley?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Louz?
Aye.